The speaker tonight is Sarah Maisy.
It's members of the board, members of the board and superintendent and I thank you for your service. I'm speaking to you about equity in the North Region and the fate of Kelly YG as a parent of Kelly Middle School. There are many Kelly parents with great concern about the equity issues ongoing in the North Region who are not here tonight. Speaking here is very heavy lift in terms of ways to give feedback. And I've heard from parents, including people of color at Kelly who have serious concerns, but don't feel that they'll be heard if they share their opinion. So first, I ask that you ensure a real and effective means of engaging all stakeholders in the final Kelly YG space decision, including our non-English speaking families, those without access to technology, and those of all reading levels. There's been very little engagement in any Kelly families and it feels like we had to insert ourselves in this process to have a voice. And that's not a way to hear all this is. In terms of the timeline you're discussing tonight, I have a level of commitment to a decision at the June 17th meeting so that design, planning, and construction can happen in time for the 24, 25 school year because it's been the board's decision, it's already too late for next year to improve this unacceptable space situation. Regarding the process, I'd like to briefly reiterate a few points I shared in an email. Please consider the space needs for 4J in their entirety and with an equity lens so that you're able to come up with a plan to address the Kelly YG issue. That's not just a short-term mandate, but that includes a long-term solution. I ask you to think creatively. This space we're in now, the Ed Center, houses staff, including me, who could work in office space anywhere, whether 4J owns it or not, or who could tell over. Please prioritize our children. Moving YG here, leaving some of the central functions of this space, like facility storage, warehouse, nutrition services, seems like one of the best possibilities for YG and Kelly having their needs met and keeping YG in the North Region. I also ask that you use apples-to-apples comparisons for space and electives between middle schools. Accurate comparisons would show that Kelly, one of the highest needs middle schools in the district, with the highest percentage of English language learners, has disproportionately low elective choices in sharing, and in sharing with YG has significantly less space. This isn't even equality, let alone equity. Equity that would dictate that Kelly students have access to what they need to be successful. You know that there's no space for culinary, theater, woodshop, and no usable library. I'll share that I was there last week teaching students to ride bikes, something they'd rather do out of view of their peers. And there wasn't an appropriate space to do that, nor for any other outdoor activity, really. Every other middle school has plenty, but Kelly just has the track. All the other outdoor space is now YG space. And the dorm, blacktop, when we pass school, of course, those are YG spaces. It's just the track and they share the two or three schools. Finally, I ask that you look beyond the building needs of Kelly to consider the instructional needs of the students. These shiny young people, full of potential. They have the lowest test scores in the district and they're getting less than their fair share of experienced staff and staff who stay. My daughter has incredible teachers and I'd love to see them stick around. Please find a way to retain staff at this school and others that have this problem, whether it's working with the union to increase pay at higher leagues, schools, or some other means. With experienced teachers earning more, I'd be really curious to know what spending is per student at our schools and to see if Kelly students are getting their fair share, with a reminder that we're aiming for equity, not equality. So thank you for your time and care you have for all of the students in our district. I would really like to see evidence of the district's commitment to equity in your decision.
Thank you, Sarah Maisy. Next up, we have Mr. Harry Stager.
Thank you Chair of the Board, 4J Board, Superintendent Dai for having me tonight. When we constantly see and hear the refrains such as Black Lives Matter and 2SLGBTQIA+, we want to fit in, our human nature wants to matter. And those students absolutely matter. But why not promote a mere universal spiritual truth like all of God's children matter? That allows for true inclusivity instead of piling on affinity groups, forcing children to associate by identity over shared interests. I should clarify, as long as the affinity isn't based in organized religion, only pseudo-religions are allowed to hypnotize our youth with the constant repetition of slogans and imagery. Is it appropriate for a first grade student to come home and ask, Dad, why does the sign at school say "be a certain way"? Thanks, 4J. Thank you for taking away my family's ability to raise a child at our own pace and forcing your creed and values on us. Yet, if I stand up and say enough, then I become the target of vitriol from you and your bigoted proxies. I become the direct topic of gossip from the board without being included in the conversation. I am turned away from the podium before I can speak. Other speakers use your forum to deliver false claims about myself and community groups with similar concerns. If we're just following policies, despite your policy not to name individuals in public comments, and you do not even issue a basic admonishment. Whether you personally agree with them or not, your role demands you at least uphold basic standards of decorum. It's not just me though, is it? It's the Sheldon Gollival families you disrespected. It's the Churchill families exposed to your inappropriate CSE. And yes, comprehensive sex ed is designed to enable assignments like that. It is the YG corridor and Kelly families you misled in order to get your last bond passed. It's the Spencer Butte families worried about their children's safety. It's the parents, students, and teachers with unanswered questions about next year's new school calendar. It's the outrageous dysfunctions board has exhibited all year. And it's a slate of more of the same candidates supported by the teachers' union and their systemic election support structure. 4J needs a new board. One that balances the left path and the right path to open up the middle corridor that leads to success. There was recently a mailer that named four candidates. Michael Bratlin, Rick Hamilton, Grant Johnson, and Timothy Sutherland. Now, not all of these candidates knew that this was being sent out, but that shouldn't matter because nothing on that mailer was as extreme as the partisan activists in this community want you to believe. It was encouraging voters to choose school boards that quote, "put the essentials of education over an assortment of controversial ideologies." It also adds concern for quote, "districts withholding mental and physical health information from parents." Information that will only become more obscured if HB 2002 passes. No word is to say that any children be included or branded scarlet letter. Assumptions are being made and the collective, your own prejudices are being demonstrated. Each and every candidate on that mailer wants what's best for all children that while they're running for public service. I hope that, I hope too, that they share in my belief, like many in our community, that it is our duty to shield children from society's ideological tensions rather than forcing them into the vanguard. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lodi Soderholm. I'm a math teacher at Churchill High School and I've been with 4J since 2001. I first like to thank all those who were part of the subcommittees involved in the challenging work to craft a new schedule for our four high schools. I'm grateful for the contribution of their time and commitment. I can empathize with the weight of the responsibility of their charge since I was a part of the committees during the last schedule. It's actually my last. The future and well-being of our students are critical and have been entrusted to us. We must not be careless on how we move forward. Our students and families deserve the best we can give. The first of the basic beliefs stated on our district website is this is a student-centered district. Everything we do must be good for children. As is also stated on our 4J website, school district staff should be advocates for the needs of children. We are advocating for the needs of our children. As teachers, our promise and career choices should provide the best education we can for them. In March 2019, our students and families dealt with the COVID shutdown needing to distance learning at home with Google Classroom. In 2021 school year, they continued distance learning from home for the first two trimesters but with a new Canvas platform. In spring 2021, they came back to brick and mortar, but on a hybrid schedule with masks and distancing. In 2122, they returned to schools but continued with the COVID precautions. This has been the closest to regular school they have seen in three years. As a result, after what they have endured the past three years, they need and deserve a well-designed, fully-developed schedule to provide them the security, stability, and consistency they deserve. As a result of the years of discontinuity, we have seen substantial gaps in learning, increases in IP's and 504s, and most frightening, increases in depression and suicides. And now we are asking them to go through another change with a schedule that has not been thoroughly vetted and developed. Even the details of the flex have not been worked out. With only six and a half weeks of the school year left and the flex day still being worked on, how can we possibly believe that we are prepared to start the next school year with so many unknowns? The subcommittee has identified many issues and challenges, but more time is needed to work out the best solutions for our students and families. Our schools are full of amazing, intelligent teachers and professionals working side by side with our students and know what our students need to succeed. My request is to take a pause for one year before moving forward with this change. There is no crisis here that would mandate an immediate shift. Give us the opportunity to build on the work that has been started and to do it with fidelity and integrity, making this a schedule that has the ability to sustain our goal to provide the support and stability our students and families expect from us and deserve. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker tonight is Allison Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Allison Johnson. And this year I've had the honor and privilege of being called Allison Sensei by all of those adorable children who heard her today. I could not be more proud of how well they represented the heart of our program at YG tonight. I come to you as a first-year kindergarten teacher and also a parent of two YG students, one who's currently a seventh grader at Kelly and as a parent representative on the transition team after the bond was passed. I've been to board meetings, spoken at board meetings, attended transition meetings, attended voluntary after-school staff meetings, online Zoom meetings, and yet here we still are back to square one. Still no short or long-term plan for YG. In Japan, I've learned there's a saying, "Mottainai." It conveys a sense of regret over something that is needlessly wasted, its full value not being put to good use. Decisions have been made over the past four years that have deeply affected our whole community. Our school home was demolished, our beautiful sakura cut down in full bloom. Our only option for our Japanese immersion school was to be involuntarily relocated to a building named in honor of a World War II pilot who became a hero for bombing the Japanese. To our native Japanese teachers and families, a giant propeller hangs on the front of our building as a constant reminder of their place. Like everyone, we struggled through COVID and had to extend hybrid learning due to the beams failing in the Kelly gym, the tragic death of a construction worker. We'd hoped the district would live up to their commitment of being good stewards of our lands and our resources, as stated every week in the land acknowledgements. But we were mistaken. How much bond money will be spent on Sunday piles of rubble to dig up? Mottainai. Our strong community, school community, has relied on each other to share these heavy burdens time and time again. We are strong, but we are small and we're all wearing as many hats as we can fit on our heads. Our small staff lives with the constant stress of wondering what the future will be for our students. Did we ask the right questions? Did we think hard enough about what all of our options are? Did we speak loudly enough? Is it enough to secure a bright future for our program? This keeps us all up at night. We've lost incredible teachers. We've lost hours of planning time, hours that could be spent enjoying time with our families. We've lost our trust in the process. Mottainai. Last week, we heard about the low-level nageha you've been experiencing up to the vote to demolish North. We've been experiencing this on an infinitely higher level for almost four years. When you walk away tonight, please do not mistake the beauty of our students standing with the signs of a healthy program. We have been pushed to our limits and beyond. You need to take this burden from us and give us the [BLEEP] so we can focus on serving our students better. The sakura are blooming again, times fleeting. We will continue to speak up and stand for YG as long as it takes. We are hopeful you'll do the right thing for the North Region. This community has lost trust in the district and board and this is your chance to make it right. If you want the people of Eugene to continue passing bonds, they need to know that you will keep your word and do what is right for our children and our community. We now hear there are additional funds and district has, the city, that the district has in the city will be asking to use them tonight. Don't spend our bond money and tax dollars on tearing down programs. Spend it on building them up. I hope you will find a way and tomorrow will be.
Mylaire Banson.
Hi. Hi. My name is Mylaire Banson. I'm the mother of three children in 4J. Wendy Roosevelt, Wendy South, and then another graduated high school last year. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed high school schedule change. The decision process has ignored the feedback of 4J educators and failed to adequately inform 4J parents of the impact this change will have on our teenagers. There are too many problems with the proposed new schedule to summarize in a three-minute talk. Anyone listening can read more information at this website, That's 4JHighSchoolChanges.org. Suffice it to say that as the parent of a high school student and a 4J resident, cares deeply about education and opportunities for all, including our most vulnerable and marginalized students, I'm very alarmed by this proposal. The teachers I've spoken with, stays with their voices and concerns have been ignored throughout the decision-making process. They report that the educators on committees have brought up problems over and over, but the critical questions that they've asked the district leadership have been met with silence and stonewalling. I don't know how familiar this rule board is with this new schedule, but I beg you to talk with parents and educators about this directly and not rely solely on what is communicated to you from the district leadership. Educators and parents' voices have not been sufficiently heard in this process. My final question for the board is this. Where is the research-based evidence that this change will be beneficial to students? The high school seniors in 2024 have dealt with traumatic educational upheaval every single year of high school, starting in 2020. If this schedule change is designed to help them, where is their research? If there's no research backing this up, then why is the district rushing in with an incomplete and constantly changing plan against the wishes of teachers, parents, and students? As a 4J parent, on behalf of many other parents and teachers, I am pleading with this rule board to pause this transition for another year. Please, please, please take the time to listen to teachers address concerns, inform parents, get community buy-in, and collaboratively design a schedule that will help our students, not hurt them. Thank you.
Up next, we have Maisy Drum Sola.
Hi. Hi. My name is Maisy. I attend fourth grade at Eugene Gawklin. Before I went here, I thought this might be a smoky school with privileged kids. I was wrong. There are all kinds of kids, just like at my last school. There are even about a quarter of my class that speaks Spanish at home. The difference between this school and my mom's is the teachers. Even though I just started here in November, I'm already learning Japanese. We sing every day, we dance, and each grade is working on play the performance this time of year. All of the teachers know my name. I was bored and annoyed at my last school. Now I am glad to go every day. We walk to school like, like a lot of my classmates. If this school moved to South Region, I would not be able to go. My brother wrote to Kelly, but many of the things my older cousins told us about Kelly no longer exist. I feel bad that he does not have time and time for other activities. I'm surprised that this building seems to be falling apart. There was a hole coming from the ceiling when we went to pick up my brother's computer. When water was pouring from the ceiling into a big garbage can, it wasn't even raining that day. I know this school will grow because there are many new houses all around us. I'm worried about going to middle school here and also worried that you might move my school to a place that I will not be able to get to every day.
Thank you, Maisy Drum Sola. Amanda Christie is our next speaker.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Dai, high school representatives, and our community here and online. Being a teacher at YG has taught me a great deal about grace and perseverance. We have endured years of meetings about the situation that we were put in when the original Eugene Gawklin building was demolished. In these meetings, we worked closely with the documents that 4J gave us that repeatedly stated that the plan for the original North Eugene High School site was to be used for educational space for supporting YG, Kelly, and other programs. We are looking forward to that commitment being carried out with an educational space to be developed on the North Eugene High School demolished site. Your follow-through with this being an educational space as laid out in the documents that followed the bond will instill trust and security with community members. With the past decision of shutting down a corridor school, there is one less program to accommodate at that location. Past corridor students are now Eugene Gawklin students. With the bond in 2028, Eugene Gawklin would be overjoyed to have a new school building down the street from the new North Eugene High School at the demolished site. Our original home was on Silver Lane. If other educational programs need to be placed at the new educational space on the demolished North Eugene High School site, the community of Eugene Gawklin would also feel supported if we were put in a future building at the 15-acre Admiral Street location with that plan set out in 2028 bond. YG staff appreciates Dr. Dai's plan for action and community input. I think you'll be sharing that tonight. Though, we believe that the primary missing piece is surveys for YG and Kelly families. Not that you missed that in that document, but that for us, that was the missing piece in all of the work that we've done through the years. Please place your focus on surveying families. We have a thorough and thoughtful survey, informed by Kelly and YG staff who are connected to their respective families. What we have already found from surveying families is that moving YG to the hooded site is not an option for them. Our North families need to stay in the North Region. If we are co-located with Kelly Middle School before the 2028 bond, the multipurpose space that 4J leader suggested as an option for Kelly Middle School on a recent co-location map will need to be built so that each school can have their own lunches that don't start at 10:00 to 25:00. During other parts of the day, this space can be used for academic and extracurricular activities. A dedicated space for band would also be beneficial and could also be used for the same additional purposes. In summation, being from our home and being without communication has been truly challenging. We are hoping to finish this commitment alongside you, initial commitment up to 2017, 2018. Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Jill Montrie. Oh, Jill. I believe it's online. It appears that Jill is not online, so we will go to the next speaker, who is Taya Morakami.
Hey, everybody. We just want to start by saying we're zooming in from Outdoor School out with Campbell Lani right now. And Taya, thoughts is important enough, these taking time away from Gaga Ball to present to all of you. So without further ado, here's Taya.
Hello, everybody. My name is Taya Morakami. And I'm currently in fifth grade at YG Elementary School. I grew up in New York City and moved here recently and attended YG from third grade to fifth. YG is a beautiful and joyful school that is set to expand and help its students' minds by doing things differently than usual. Though I've not been here since kindergarten, I'm still able to recognize the beauty and the meaning that this school possesses. Its deep and interesting history, being the first Japanese immersion school, the U.S. has a lot of meaning to its staff and students who come here. And that is what will cause us to fight for so long for the equity and diversity of our wonderful school. I, and I'm sure that I can speak for all who attend YG, love this school to the moon and back for all that it has given us. So I will plead all day for a solution that is acceptable and reasonable. As you know, I'm a fifth grader and I have no younger siblings attending school next year, so I'll have no reason to fight for the school. But I am, because of all the staff, teachers, and students whom I've grown so close to, needs everyone's voice and help. And I happen to have a voice, so I'm going to use it for the right reasons, the ones that matter. We need an education that is safe, comfortable, and meaningful. To do that, we need a space where we are not being forced to share a location with another school, Kelly Middle School, that also needs more space than your predictions thought to be able to be educated properly with the experiences they need. Absolutely no say in the location we were forced to move to and Kelly Middle School had no say either, and they shouldn't. After all, it is their school. Kelly Middle School and YG were forced to share a building with false promises that you knew were fake from the beginning. Nearly half of the school and most of the special electives, such as the game room, the sewing room, home economics room, have been occupied by YG, preventing Kelly Middle School students from being able to use them. These special electives need to be shared and taught for a healthy balance of education and fun. All that I'm asking of you is that you put as much thought and consideration into this discussion as possible. This decision matters a lot to me. If you were to do that, it would mean so much to me. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you, Taya. And our last speaker tonight is Larry Lewin.
I'm Larry Lewin, retired 4J teacher, member of the Community Education Group Cape. Good to be back. Thanks always, board members and Superintendent Andy, for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. And thanks to the YG parents and students for showing up. In Oregon, we have a local performance assessment requirement that states, quote, "School district shall administer one or more performance assessments each year to all students in grades three through eight and in high school in four areas: math, scientific inquiry, speaking, and writing." The Oregon law goes on, "Locally created performance assessments must be a standardized measure, for example, an activity, an exercise, a problem, or a work sample, scored by a common scoring instrument, such as the official state scoring guide or another scoring guide adopted by any district that is embedded in the school curriculum and evaluates the application of students' knowledges and skills." This state requirement for local standardized measures is a very good idea. It decentralizes assessment. Now, this might surprise you based on my criticism for years on the overuse of standardized testing, but my complaints have always been about the overuse of commercially purchased national products that are expensive, time-consuming, and often not tailored to what our students are actually learning in their classes. Once upon a time, our 4J district was a national leader in local performance assessments with commonly-used teacher scoring guides. In the late 1990s, district 4J leadership- In the late 1990s, district 4J leadership invested in helping teachers and principals learn how to accomplish this. I was lucky. I was on the team that benefited from the training, the practice, the collaboration to learn how to create valid, reliable, credible, teacher-designed, classroom-based, curriculum-embedded, colleague-vetted, performance task assessments that inspired our students to do their very best work. 4J can begin, can again become a leading innovative school system. And good news, the ODE Student Success Act with SIA funding is available next year to accomplish this. SIA Deputy Superintendent Scott Nein is waiting for our application and is eager to assist us. Imagine this, 4J changing course and dedicating itself to reimagine everyday teaching and assessment that is not geared to teach to the test and endless data processing. It is time for us to take full advantage. Working together, this school board has made progress on improving our assessment system. One, last year, the school board voted to allow teachers to speak honestly to parents about their opinion of standardized tests. Thank you, Gordon. Two, I now believe not all students in grades three through eight must take all three easy CBM assessments. If they, if they successfully meet the first one, they're excused. Thank you, Judy. And we now have an opportunity to go further if we have the vision, the imagination, and the will of what's being offered to us. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to speak with us today.